It will rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which is one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mike Thompson.
I'm here.
Marilyn Earley.
Here.
Deborah Nelson.
Here.
Tom Manny.
Here.
Jen Schweny.
Here.
Jessica Stickles.
Here.
Michelle Blythe.
Here.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Debra.
Question?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we have quite a few items tonight. We'll move first right into the first one, which is the ordinance supporting House Bill 1406 authorizing funding for affordable housing. Paul?
Thank you, Mayor.
Good evening, Council. This is an ordinance that I'll back up. And if you you may recall, in January, Council approved a resolution for this in support of House Bill 1406. House Bill 1406 authorizes cities who apply to get what I'll call is a rebate back on the state portion of the sales tax that can be used towards funding affordable housing. Back when we did the resolution, Council had agreed that because the amount of money was was not that large, according to AWC estimates, it'll be about $40,000 annually for the city of Arlington, that we would use that money to help with rent relief and that the county had agreed to administrate those funds for us and apply them towards rental relief within the city of Arlington. The $40,000 annually would require a budget amendment for this year, although it will be prorated because if this resolution or excuse me ordinance passes tonight, collections would actually start in September. Happy to answer any questions.
I have I have question. The rent relief, is that for all citizens or just business? Or how's that how's that determined? In terms of who gets what?
Well, what we approved before was this would be rental relief for residential. That's the intent. It's for affordable housing is what 1406 addresses. So it would be for residential rental relief for citizens within the city limits.
Excellent. Thank you.
Paul, how would we identify who who receives benefits?
That's where we would use the county to administrate it because they have the they already have the staff in place. They already have the program in place. It would just be expanding it. So these additional funds would go apply to residents within within the city limits.
Currently, the county has a couple year waiting list for people that need assistance. So this would help fill some of that bucket.
Okay.
I can't think of any reason why we wouldn't do that.
Yeah, no.
I mean, why wouldn't we?
So this is.
Oh, I'm sorry. Part of the requirement is is that we do pass this by the end of July to get the maximum amount. If we delay it, just our collection rate will will drop a bit.
I say go for it.
This doesn't change how much we collect, correct?
No, this comes out of the state's portion. So this has has no effect on the city's collection of sales tax, the rate or the amount that we collect. I did put the 40,000 in as an annual expense so that you understand that, but there'll be a revenue stream that will offset it. So we will amend the budget to report a revenue and an expense.
I guess I would have one question. Is this for a determined amount of time?
This doesn't have a sunset in it that I'm aware of.
And so it goes on forever unless we change it.
Unless the state legislature overturns that bill. Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I'd like to pick up on what Marilyn just said. So it would the council have an option at some point down the line to end it? Or not? Would that just?
Presumably, the council could withdraw this ordinance at any time that you want, but you'd just be giving that money back up back to the state. If the state legislature overturns House Bill 1406, then it would sunset with their under their authority.
Any other questions? Okay, so move to our next item, which is an interlocal agreement with Washington School Information Processing Cooperative. And we welcome Debbie Stretts to present to us. Hi, Debbie. Hope you're on mute.
There, can you hear me now? My first time. Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council members. For those of you who don't know who who I am, my name's Debbie Stretts, and I am the Procurement Contracts Analyst since Kurt has retired. So nice to see you all. For your consideration this evening, I would like to present a request for the city of Arlington to enter into an interlocal agreement with the Washington School Information Processing Cooperative, also known as WSIPC, for the purpose of purchasing IT supplies and services. Specifically, the city is interested in piggybacking off of a contract with Ednetics, who is an awarded vendor with WSIPC for building security solutions. And this will allow the city to purchase goods and services at more cost effective prices. And WSPIC has gone through the RFP procurement process and verifying with Kristin Garcia. It aligns with our purchasing procedures. WSPIC was formed in 1967 and provides purchasing solutions for over 1,500 schools and many local governments in Washington State. Myself or Brian can answer any questions that you may have.
Does anybody have any questions on the Purchasing Cooperative?
No.
Looks like a win win situation.
I see you explained it very well.
Again, why wouldn't we do this?
Yes. And we we always appreciate bringing new purchasing opportunities before the council that can save us money and make us more efficient.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the next item we have is the Business Rent Relief Grant Program. Kristin.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, members of council. So included in your packet is a summary of business rent relief grants that we are suggesting be awarded under round two of our business rent relief program. There was a total of 38 applications that were received. Seven of those applications were carryovers from our first round. Of the 38, we had five that were not eligible. We had two applications that were outside of city limits. We had one that decided to opt out at the last minute, and then we had the remaining that didn't provide all the required documentation. So we ended up having a total of 33 that were eligible for this round of funding. The amount of the proposed grant awards under this round is $97,848. And if council approves the second round, that would be bring the total amount awarded under both round one and both and round two to 193,220, which is about 6,700 less than the 200,000 that was targeted for this program. The intent is unless there's any significant objections to what is included in your packet tonight, I would like to send out award letters tomorrow notifying the applicants that they can be expecting an award. And then, of course, checks would not be mailed until council officially approves next Monday.
Sounds good to me.
Yeah.
Let them know.
It's good.
Okay, Jan, did you have a question? I saw your hand.
Yeah, not a problem. On the total amount, we had 592,000. How much of that will we have left after this?
Out of the total 592, after this, I think we have about 260,000 left. So we had the 100,000 that went to the Community Resource Center.
Right.
It'll be about 200,000. And then we had a couple of small expenditures. But we have incurred about 65,000 of just COVID related expenses. So assuming those all qualify, we're getting about 260 or less remaining of the original 592.
We do have additional expenses coming in that we'll have to that we're budgeting for.
Okay, we don't have. Do we have a timeline that we have to spend it? Or how does that work?
October 31st.
October 31st, yes. All expenditures will have to be incurred by 10:31.
Okay, thank you.
So any other questions, Mike?
Yeah, I'm curious to know the five that were denied. If you can say in general, why were they denied? What were the problems for people that are businesses that were denied?
So two of them were not in city of Arlington. So they were outside of city of Arlington. One of them just came back and said they didn't want to participate any longer. And then the rest of them didn't. As part of the application, they were required to supply proof of rent as well as recovery plan. And the other ones did not provide that documentation.
Thank you.
Michelle?
I'm just, I know that was a lot of work to do on both both times we put this out there. And after asking you a few questions today, I could see how involved the process would get for you. So thank you. You and I guess Sarah for all your work on it. And I think it's great that we were able to help that many people out.
Any other questions or comments? Any anyone object to Kristin going ahead and notifying the grantees of the potential award tomorrow?
No, go ahead and do it.
All right, great. Thank you, Kristin.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the next item is a resolution approving a customer support program. That's also Kristin.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. On, you may recall, we brought a resolution to you, I guess about a month ago, based on a proclamation that the governor had issued, which prohibited shut offs and late fees. That proclamation extended that deadline to July 28. And then again, on July 2, the governor issued a new proclamation that now extends that shut off waiver for utility accounts to August 1. In that original proclamation, there was also an element that was required called a customer support program. And the proclamation, we are supposed to have the customer support program online by August 1. So the resolution that I have before you tonight is specific to the customer support program. And it is based on the guidance that was outlined by the state. So the customer support program that we're outlining for you tonight, we would be extending our shut off and late fee waiver through August 30. The intent of that is we thought that would give staff enough time to communicate and work with our delinquent customers, to educate them on what our support program looks like, what the requirements are, when we might start implementing the shut off, what resources are available to them, if they still need some financial assistance. So we thought extending that date to August 30 would give us time to go through that process. So what the plan would look like is we would target September 23 to begin implementing our shut off and late fee process for those that are not on a repayment plan. So delinquent, so what we're proposing is that anyone who's delinquent would have to be on repayment plan by September 15 to avoid the shut off and late fee on September 23. So any account that is not enrolled on a repayment plan by September 15, then we would implement shut off on September 23. The repayment plan would be for a period of eight months. The state's guidance indicated that it needed to be a long term repayment plan. They had indicated somewhere between six and 18 months was long term. So we looked at our delinquent accounts, the the amount that they're delinquent. And the majority of those are really less than two months. So we felt like an eight month repayment plan seemed reasonable and would give our customers an opportunity to pay their current balance, which would be required on the repayment plan, plus an amount applied to the delinquent balance without making that dollar amount so significant that they wouldn't be able to meet terms of the plan. So that's kind of where we we came up with the eight months. So if the terms of the repayment plan aren't met at any time during that eight month period, then the account would be subject to shut off. But if they are meeting the terms of the repayment plan, we will not shut off and we will not apply late fees to their account. For those accounts that are current up to and beyond September 15, so they're not delinquent, they're all current with their accounts, but they become delinquent subsequent, say, in November of 2020, then our normal repayment plan of the 10 day period, we would revert back to that. So we we kind of have a plan to get people through this financial hardship due to COVID, but then also have a plan to try to get back to our normal processes and policies. A couple of other elements that were required in the customer support program is that we are required to do communications to our customers, which we have already started. The key elements are we need to communicate what our customer support plan is, when shut offs would occur, what the repayment plan is, and any resources that are available to them. So I included in your packet some samples of some communications that we have already done. And then if council approves this next week, then our next round of communications, of course, will include the details of the plan and we'll continue that outreach. We've also kind of ramped up our outreach that we normally do to notify customers that their accounts are late. So we were continuing to do our late notices. We've added an additional phone dialer. Our phone dialer is a voicemail that goes out to our customers, letting them know, please contact our office if you want to make a payment or pay number and arrangement. We've added in a second one of that, just to keep customers mindful of where they are with their bills. We've also started for those customers that are getting more than two or three months behind. We've been doing some personal outreach, making phone calls and emails, just, you know, trying to make as many contacts as we can. And then we're also starting to do door tags again for some of those higher balances. And door tags is placed on the the house. Again, we're just trying to find as many ways that we can reach the customer to try to let them know what's happening and what resources that we can provide to them to help them through this process. We're also letting them know that the Community Resource Center is available. We'll be letting them know all the resources on our website. There's a link on our website that has different state and county and local resources available to them if they're still facing financial hardship. And I do want to point out that this plan is based on the governor's most recent proclamation. He they have been issued frequently. So just keep in mind that if any updated guidance comes out, then this plan may have to be amended to make sure that we're aligning with the state guidance.
Thank you, Kristin. Does anybody have any questions or comments on that? Jan?
Yeah, I have a comment. Kristin answered the one question and concern I had. Thank you so much for adding all the extra communication. My one concern, when I read that, I was thinking, okay, if I'm sitting at home, I don't have a job, I'm not paying rent, I can't pay my utilities. When the bill comes, I'm not opening it. I'm sticking it on someplace just to set. And then I was worried, how would they meet the deadlines? So thank you so much and your staff for going to all that extra work because that was just incredible what you guys are doing.
Thanks, Jan.
Anybody else have any questions or comments? I think it's a well laid out plan, Kristin. Thank you for going through the state guidance and aligning our plan with that.
Thank you.
Okay, so our next item is a dedication of right of way for 169th Street Northeast, Marques.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. So for your consideration this evening is a proposed dedication right of way for the creation of the 169th roadway section from Smoky Point Boulevard to the terminus of the affinity project. So this will be they have the base course and curb gutter sidewalk drainage is already completed. Going to be deferred on this is final lift of asphalt until after the final belt out of of the affinity project. So so we're just looking for a typical dedication right away.
Now, Mark, was this the road that we originally were hoping that would connect to the backside of Safeway? So that way we can turn. Okay.
Right. So this is the one that comes created the new leg of the intersection at Smoky Point Boulevard. New signal was put in. This will go to the terminus, the east edge of the affinity project. There'll be a gap between that and 43rd behind Walmart that the city will will take on as a project. And then as the development occurs further east, there's a 20 acre parcel that they'll be responsible for building their segment of that. And then the 51st Avenue project, Woodman Z project, will build the remainder of that out to 51st. And that's where it becomes 168, because it does drop to the south mealyway.
And then the road that the city plans to put in to connect to 169th, would that be a road or would that be like an alley?
No, that will be a road.
And what what's our timeline for that?
I just saw that there was got on the list for proposed funding, so.
Yeah.
We're on the contingency.
We're on the contingency list.
The latest round of the PSRC funding allocations.
So so what does that mean for time?
I believe the timeframe on that contingency item was 2024.
If we're accepted.
Yes.
Correct. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments for Mark on this dedication? Always a hope that this road would be completed before they started the widening of 172nd. So there would be an alternate way to go east and west there.
That would be good.
Yeah.
Can I ask? Yeah, I just want to ask Mark, and he may not know for sure, but on that section that goes by the affinity, is anyone planning like sidewalks from 169th down to 168th through that section where the post office is and restaurants and everything?
So there is a project that we have discussed. They've turned in plans. They just haven't moved forward with it. There's a warehouse project that is proposed for the south side of that alignment. So that would create a roadway extension from 169th down to 168th by the post office. And that would include two lanes of travel lanes and then sidewalk on both sides.
Okay.
There would be that connection that was created. We're just waiting for the project to move forward.
Well, I've had several of the businesses down there ask me, so I was hadn't heard for sure what was happening. Thank you.
Yep.
Is that it for Mark? All right. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
So move on to the next item, which is an update to the Arlington Municipal Code regarding the Airport Commission. Dave Ryan.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the commission. On the agenda is a request to amend Title 14 of the Arlington Municipal Code to allow the Airport Commission to appoint a vice chair position on the commission. And that would assume the role of the chair if the chair was unavailable. So we've talked to the commission about this. It was their idea. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Have any questions? Idea. Looks like there's a explanation.
Good problem solving.
Yeah. Well, what would they do if, I mean, are they just kind of stuck right now because there is no one in charge?
No. We do now. It's the next most senior commission member informally takes on that role. This would just make it a little more formal.
Okay, sounds good to me. I like it.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Next up is the land lease agreement with Coastar LLC for temporary well drilling site. Jim Kelly.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, this side and council members. This item before you tonight is a request to enter into a land lease agreement with Coastar LLC to lease some property so we can install a temporary test well and monitoring well over on the north side of the river. It's a short two month construction window for the well and then a 10 month lease to do testing and monitoring. Afterwards, side, we have a 12 month window on purchase of up to one acre of that parcel.
Thank you, Jim. I think this is something the council asked you to get taken into consideration and move forward on. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Jan?
Yeah, sorry. The one thing, so in the end, if we do find a well there, what is the cost of the property going to be? I guess I'm I'm thinking too negatively here. And I'm thinking, okay, if they find water and we want to turn it into a well, then whoever owns it, because the city is going to use all the water and everything that they're going to charge us outrageous prices? How does that work?
The city has a the city has a process for purchasing land, and that is we contract with a state registered land appraiser. And we base our value, our purchase value on the land appraisal.
Okay, so it won't make any difference that now we've got water for the city? I mean, you know.
And there's also numerous sites over there. All we want to do is we want to find out what the hydrogeologic conditions are on the north side of the well, on the north side of the river. There are
Oh, okay.
There are numerous sites. I mean, we can buy land from anybody out there. We just want to see what the what the quality of the water is. There's a sort of an oxbow, how the the river turns. We want to see what what's in that deposition, what's in the hydrogeologic deposition over there.
Okay, thank you. That makes sense to me. Appreciate that.
I also has a question.
Hi, Jim. So I'm assuming that as you monitor these wells, both on the north side of the river and the ones on the south side of the river, there's numbers that you're looking at, at which ones are going to produce how much water and the quality of water. So then you'll make the decision of whether we're going to go forward in purchasing, say, the piece on the north side. If it's not producing great water, then we're not going to go forward with this, correct?
That is correct. If if it's not producing great water, if we have, if we get a lot of good test wells on the south side of the river, and even if we get a good test well on the north side of the river, developing that well is so much more expensive than putting something on the south side.
That's what I thought. Okay.
We would, we would keep the information and maybe five, eight, 10 years down the road, if we need to develop more water rights, we would go over to the north side.
Okay, because Jan, I tend to think like you and hate to see the city be taken advantage of in a situation like that. So thank you.
Yeah, that's exactly why I brought up this this point at the last meeting when this was brought up about holding us hostage, basically. If all sudden, we've got a they've got a commodity that we want to buy. But no, I appreciate the effort you put into this, Jim.
Thank you, Don.
Any other questions or comments on this one? Great. We'll move to the next one, which is the right of way purchase for 204th North Street Northeast and 77th Avenue Northeast.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor and council member. Before you is a request to purchase right of ways and temporary construction easements for two properties at the for two properties at the two hundred and fourth Roundabout. Both of these properties are in the south side of the road. One is Skagit State Bank and the other one is Botch Holdings LLC. As you can see on the council agenda bill, the total package for this purchase is seventy four thousand twenty three dollars. Bringing our total right of way acquisition up to twenty seventy five thousand one hundred and twenty three dollars. We budgeted three hundred and ten thousand nine hundred and forty eight dollars. We still have a balance of two thirty five for right of way procurement.
Do you have any questions for Jim on this? Jim, I'm sure you're anticipating having more right of way purchases for this.
Parcels on the north side of the road.
Anybody have any questions or comments on this?
Just thank you for the breakdown of the the monies. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
The quick study. All right, so we'll move to the next item, which is going to be jointly presented by two directors this evening. And it's the design contract for the Smoky Point Boulevard corridor and then Jim Kelly and Mark Hayes. I'm assuming you guys know which order you want to go.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. So this evening for your consideration is the acceptance of PRTI engineering for the award of the Smoky Point Boulevard corridor project planning and design. If you remember, this is a grant that PSRC granted nine hundred and fifty nine thousand seven hundred and eighty eight dollars. For a portion of this, the total of project fee being negotiated currently is one point six million dollars. There was additional monies that were applied to this funding out of the Transportation Improvement Fund, six hundred and forty thousand two hundred and twelve dollars. We went through a selection process and it was with four staff members, city staff members and council member Jan Schweddy was a participant in our selection process. Went through some interviews with some very qualified consultants. PRTI just happens to be, you know, above all the others in the selection process. They actually did their homework. They read our horizontal mixed use plan so they know what we're looking for in this in this corridor planning. If you recall, when we did adopt the horizontal mixed use design regulations, we looked at this corridor as being more of a main street design. So it had a full planned median in it. A lane in each direction with drop lanes off of the main through lane, which provided for on-street parking along the corridor, which met with our horizontal mixed use. So we had businesses, commercial uses out along the the frontage with residential and behind that. Dividing the residential from the retailing and commercial uses was an alley that runs parallel to Smoky Point Boulevard, the entire lane. So that services that neighborhood area as well as the back of the retail, commercial businesses or staff parking, deliveries, additional customer parking. So the nice thing about this during the interview process is that PRTI had a very interesting thought as to how this project should be planned. So they were looking at it in a example as they would do the design for the corridor itself, so the through lanes, the everything between the the drop lane on both sides of the road. So that would be part of the project. The drop lane and the on-street parking and those improvement sidewalk and landscaping would be developer board. So it was a it was a nice process and they gave us some thought as they they move forward with their their presentation.
Thank you, Mark.
As Mark said, this is this is a joint Public Works and CED project. It's more than just building a roadway. We're developing a corridor for a community. If you drive north on Smoky Point Boulevard, you come to seventy fourth and you immediately drop down from a somewhat urbanized corridor to a two lane rural road section. And Smoky Point Boulevard has been getting more and more traffic every year, both pedestrian traffic, bike traffic, vehicle and freight. What we need to do is we need to take a look at this corridor for the future to see the transit needs as well as the horizontal mixed use needs and how we can develop into this into a sustainable urban corridor. PRTI did provide one of the did provide the best proposal out of the whole project. And some of the big aspects of this pro of their approach is going to be community engagement. Right now, that is taking up a very large portion of this project is going out there and working with the community to get their feedback on what they want to see out there and what the needs are for the community. We also have conceptual design alternatives that we will be presenting to council as well as to the community. Working with PRTI, we're looking at this as being anywhere from a twenty four to a twenty eight month project. So it will take a couple of years of design and planning to get something finalized. This is, there is federal dollars on this project, so we have to go through a lot more hoops such as environmental justice as well as full breadth NEPA on this project. By the time the next council bill comes towards you, you will have a copy of the final and agreed fee structure for this project.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Mark. Jessica. And then Don.
Thank you, guys. I had a couple of questions on this. So reading through their contract, it looks like they're offering to take care of making all the marketing materials and helping create a marketing plan and attending the meetings. But am I correct that they're not planning on putting together the meetings themselves, hosting it themselves, or even doing any of the actual outreach themselves?
No, they will be doing the outreach themselves. It's not PRTI, it's Enviro Issues.
And so them doing the outreach is meaning mailing?
The meaning mailing means feet on the ground, door to door knocking, as well as public meetings and or Zoom meetings. We're still trying to investigate how to go forward with the with the public meetings.
Sure. And then my second question has to do with what we talked about when we were talking about the design even of one seventy second. Is making sure that when we do the landscaping and sidewalk plans that we add the electrical conduit so that there's ample room if we want to add electricity to it or how do you plan and how do you add that in? I didn't see it in there.
That is a contract that we have to enter into with the PUD. Snohomish PUD, that's going to be a third party contract that we have to enter into separately with that with the PUD. PRTI will put the conductors, the the conduit in the ground. But it's PUD that has to do the design work as well as all of the work, not only from putting overhead to underground, but how to put the underground to all the businesses that currently have overhead drops.
So did they have conduit noted in this and I just missed it?
No, they did not have conduit because it would, they they can't speculate on how much conduit or where it's going to go until they get that information from the PUD.
So this is just the design of the corridor, Jessica, and it is not the actual construction. But I do like the point to keep in mind as we work with PRTI and the community. You know, as we build this into a nice corridor on that side of Arlington that we keep in mind, future decorations and streetscapes that would help make, put a central gathering place in Smoky Point.
Especially if we're already doing it just a little bit further down the road.
We are, the landscaping in the urban design is a key component in this in this project. We are also using, we have three other smaller projects going on in Smoky Point. The Fortieth Avenue Intersection Project, the Smoky Point Boulevard Overlay Project and one seventy third. We have reached out to the two consultants that will be working on this project Enviro Issue Issues and HPB, who will be doing the landscaping and urban design. Because we want to make sure that whatever components are brought over to that section of Smoky Point that we carry the same outreach effort as well as the same landscaping and urban design on these other three smaller projects that we're working on.
Don, did you have a question? And then Marilyn?
Yeah, I just was wondering how soon we would be able to see some kind of a conceptual design and from where to where this is going to be taking place. I see it's one hundred and seventy fourth to two hundred, but where exactly is two hundred that? Is it out there? I know one hundred and eighty eighth is general vicinity, but how much further north does it go and so forth?
We had the survey completed already. It was an aerial flight survey. Two hundredth Avenue is where the bridge is that goes over I five, the small two lane.
I don't know what I thought it was, but I wasn't a hundred percent sure.
And we've also had a survey go just a little bit past that because we know that as part of this project, that's going to be an intersection. And the construction will need to bleed a little bit more to the north to match the the existing roadway.
Don, another thing is that if you want to see what our conceptual visualization of the corridor is, if you wanted to come out to the office, I definitely would show that to you.
Sure, sure. I appreciate it.
Marilyn, did you have a question?
Yeah, I just wondered if we went through a study of several years ago and with the planning commission and the public input on Smoky Point Boulevard and this very concept of of design in that. Are we using any of that information or are we starting over?
There's some information will be gleaned from that, Marilyn, but because the the corridor design is different than what the West Arlington Plan showed, it will be different, definitely. But there are some, there is some information that comes out of that West Arlington Plan and that work that was done that will be utilized. And it actually is, part of it is incorporated in our horizontal mixed use regulations already.
Well, that's good. I just think the the public came to several meetings on that and gave their input and everything. And I just think it would be advisable to at least mention that that comment is being, you know, considered. Although we're starting with a new plan, but you know, they put a lot of time and effort into that.
Right. I think it's very important and I'm glad you brought that up.
Plans in that one, you know, when we were doing that study with the residents out there, it was more like land use. And we didn't do the road. So this is great that we'll come back and do the second part. So now the infrastructure matches what they came out with ideas for the land use out there.
Yeah, it just, it shows good follow through on the city's part to do this, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. First of all, Mark and Jim, thank you so much for both of you presenting because as I was reading through this, I was just assuming that Jim would do the presenting and I had questions in my mind that I was thinking, oh, shoot, CED would be the ones to answer. So I appreciate both of you being here tonight to present to us. And then my question is just kind of thinking about that whole corridor and along with the others, like what you mentioned, Jim, of one seventy third and Fortieth and so is this area able in the future able to be labeled like a TOD, Transit Oriented Development? Since we have, there's so much growth happening in that area and our transit system is there? Is that, and is that a way to look for more funding in the future?
The corridor meets the criteria, you know, you have rapid bus transit coming into the area, but it's it only comes up to that terminus where the existing bus turnout is, so.
We'd have to look at that. We have Daryl Smith of LDS. He is part of the team member and he'll be representing the community transit component. And we will be taking a look at that. We'll be doing a socioeconomic analysis of the corridor to see how that can help us improve our ridership and what we need to get out there to get better improved stops and more of a transportation demand model out there. So there's a lot of opportunity for that. We'll know more when we get into the project.
Okay, thank you. I'm glad you're thinking about that though, because it could be a help to us. So thank you.
You're welcome.
I want to, I want to commend you for both departments working together on this. I think this is an important corridor for the city and will continue to be an important corridor. Jan, I want to thank you for taking the time to sit in on, you know, with all of your knowledge of transportation and that. So hopefully there'll be periodic updates coming back to the council over the next couple of years as the plans start to develop.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers.
Thank you.
So we have one final item this evening, which is the Amendment to Process Solutions Contract. Jim Kelly.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. The city of Arlington entered into a three year agreement with Process Solutions to provide on-call skated support services for the water treatment plant and the wastewater treatment plant. For the first year, we set aside sixty thousand dollars for the improvements. Our our contract goes from calendar year September to through September. We have ran out of our sixty thousand dollars and we're looking to put more money on the contract. We're looking to invest another eighty thousand dollars for calendar year September twenty twenty through calendar year September twenty twenty one. There is sufficient funds in the current capital budget to expand this. And we will also make sure that as we prepare the twenty twenty one budget, that we will have funds available for that portion of the contract that is within twenty twenty one.
Any questions or comments on that one? It's going to be hard when their fiscal year runs different than, or their calendar contract year runs different than our fiscal year. Does anybody have any questions for Jim? Are you all okay with that?
I'm okay.
All right. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers.
Do we have any administrative report this evening?
Just one quick update. Just want to let council know that yesterday afternoon, we were contacted for a statewide call out for brush fire in Douglas County. So we did deploy our brush unit over there. That's part of, you might have heard on the news, the Mans Field area in Douglas County, there's a ten thousand acre brush fire going on that they have had a hard time getting in control. So they made a statewide request for support. So we did send the brush truck. They're checking in daily. We anticipate right now that they'll be back here Wednesday or leave Wednesday to come back here. It shouldn't be a long deployment. This is a statewide deployment, so we will get reimbursed for our expenses and our equipment.
I just have one report. And so in the daily briefings that I sent you, I think it was in Wednesdays of last week. There was, you know, you'd see there's like two pages of information before it tells you the numbers. And one of them was the final report from the Snohomish County Economic Recovery Task Force that I was a part of. So the they'll now move into other work to start the recovery, but the final report was in there. So if you're interested in it, put back to those daily briefings. It's a little bit of a long read, but I think there's some good work and it looks long term out there. So. Are there any council comments this evening? Mike?
There, I'm unmuted. Yeah, I have some comments to to make concerning what we've been talking about the last couple of weeks. And that is about the the police and the police protests and the presentations that we that we participated in or listened to. And so I just have a couple of comments to make about that. So responding to the killing of George Floyd by the police, the Arlington City Council passed a resolution, we all recall, condemning the racism and supporting the protests of such police police actions. And then Arlington was one of the many cities across the nation to protest against the kind of racism and police brutality that killed George Floyd and others over the past several years. And then finally, this past week, Police Chief Ventura presented to us, as we all recall, a description of the extensive
of the extensive hiring and community policing practices that he is pursuing in Arlington. And so I just want to kind of tag on to that and just say that I think it's now up to the city council and Arlington residents in partnership to examine the police policy manual and make changes necessary to ensure that the same kind of police brutality that has led to the death and injury of so many around the country is systematically eliminated and will not occur in the future. I realize that's a tall order. But I believe that a citizen policy review board should be established for the purpose of reviewing, changing and/or amending the Arlington Police Policy Manual that would focus on the following policies, among others, I suspect, the carotid artery holds, the use of force continuum, the use of force options, no-knock warrants, tear gas, militarization, body cameras, outside investigations of the use of deadly force, warnings before shootings, disciplinary actions for violations of deadly force and the duty to intercede. And then after looking into these things and then other things that might come up, the board would then report their findings, the citizen review board would report their findings to to us as the city council for any potential action. So that's just, those are just my comments concerning what we've been talking about the last few weeks. Thank you.
Any other comments this evening? So we have no public that wish to speak this evening.
Do you want to do council reports?
Well, that's, I'm asking if there's any council comments, so if you have a report.
I don't have comments, but I got a report. So I just have the public safety and our timelines are a little off. So if you guys read the monthly pretty thoroughly, you may know this, but, so for the fire department, I just wanted to give you a heads-up, still no COVID cases in the department. And Lowe's donated a really generous, like, thousand masks to the department. For the police, for May, they had overtime on every single day because of how many people were on leave. So you'll see that in the report. And then also, the short-term pro act team that Chief was able to put together for a while found over 60 violations at a well-known drug house in town. So congrats to them.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, so items for the consent agenda, I highlighted 2, 4, 9 and 10 as potentials.
I figured 6, too.
Okay, 6 as well. Anybody have any objections to 2, 4, 6, 9 and 10?
We want to have 9 open considering it is going to be something we're going to be taking public comment on along the way.
I think I agree.
So take 9 off and then we have 2, 4, 6 and 10. Any objections to any of those?
I'm always looking to you to see if there's anything else.
I was just making sure I didn't leave anything off. I think I've got it all.
Good, okay. Madam Mayor, I move to adjourn.
Second? All those in favor? One moment, please. Piper, did you have something you wanted to add before we adjourn the meeting?
You're muted. Are you muted?
Yeah, I'm sorry. No, thank you, Madam Mayor. I was just waving goodbye.
Meeting adjourned. Have a good evening.
Bye.